Okay, good afternoon. Committee on Labor and Technology has a 3:00 PM agenda. It's Monday, March 25th. Conference Room 224, Hawaii State Capitol. To discuss four governor's messages. Before we start, in the event that you have any technical difficulties, we'll be reconvening on March 27 at 3:01 PM. We do have two-minute testimony for each of you, except for the nominees. They can take as long as they need to with an opening statement. Okay? So after each nominee, you know, for each governor's messages will be followed by testimony and Q and A of each nominee. Okay? All right. So up first, we have Governor's Message 528. Blanche Matsuyama, the Board of Trustees of the Deferred Compensation Plan for a term to expire on June 30, 2027. Okay, up first. Do we have the nominee on Zoom?
Hi there.
Hello. Please proceed.
Good afternoon. My name is Rico Matsuyama. My first name is Blanche, so on the record, I go by, Blanche is my first name, but I go by Rico. I am here to be confirmed for the Deferred Comp Trustee Plan. I am in a second term. I started in 2020 in the middle of COVID, so it was a little different doing all the meetings virtually. But now, being that we're back in person, it's very nice to be able to connect with the other trustees. So I'm happy to serve again for another four-year term.
Okay, thank you very much, Rico. Okay, we have testimony from Director of D-Herd, Brenna Hashimoto. In support, okay, we have, excuse me if I chop up this name, and I don't have my reading glasses, so again. Kalae Te K'apoli, Raposa Chair of the Deferred Compensation Board. Okay, also in support, we have the Mayor of County of Kauai, Mayor Kawakami. Also in support, any others wishing to testify? Okay, seeing none, members, questions? Oh, Vice Chair.
Hi. Thank you for your first year, your first term of service. I see that you're from Kauai, and I just wondered, is the Kauai also under the Deferred Comp for the state or, yes? Do you see any advantage to being part of the state versus, because you have the opportunity to create your own, yeah?
Yeah, I mean, I think with, just with economies of scale, the plan of the size, the plan size is substantial, and it provides more credibility and the investment options are good. So I think, I think it's in our best interest to stay with the state plan.
Okay, thank you. And how did you see over the first term, if there's any challenges or things that you see should be done for the Deferred Comp Plan?
I think, I mean, staffing is going to be a challenge in terms of retention. You know, we lost, we lost a longtime staff member during my first term. Other staff members have stepped up and filled the role, and it's been, it's been a smooth transition. But I think the redundancy in the succession plan is going to be an important one. I think in the first term, we did add the Roth investment option, and that was, that was a big time that, that started, that initiative started well before my tenure, and so I can't take credit for it. But we were happy to see it through to fruition. Just started in January 2024. So we were excited that we could provide that option to members.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, members. Any other questions? Senator Favela.
Yeah, what is your idea? You might have to encourage the state employee to enroll in the Deferred Compensation Plan or the Island Saving Plan?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think we struggle with that. Proudly, County of Kauai has the highest participation rate of all the counties. And so I, that's something that I boast every, every meeting. But we're getting a lot of, the demographic is changing, right? The retirees are the ones that were contributing more, and now they're, they're non-active members just pulling from the plan, whereas we're having a hard time finding the younger ones that, you know, they have 8% taken off, off the top for ERS, right? Their medical, the medical premiums. So their take-home pay is very small. And for them, they're not as invested in their retirement, you know, investment in retirement. They're more about take-home pay and what, what I'm getting now. So that is the challenge that we are seeing. You know, we do, every mind or every, whenever we have our orientation, we bring people in to speak directly to the incoming, the new hires. And hopefully, we can get them that way. But it's very difficult to really have them prioritize this. So that's a challenge that we, we struggle with.
Thank you.
Members, any other questions? I have a quick question, Rico. You're up for reappointment. You're, you know, you're the managing director out in Kauai, and you know, comes with tremendous responsibilities. In addition to that, I've looked at your resume. You're involved with many different philanthropic and community organizations. I mean, is this something that you can commit to for the entire term of service?
Yeah, I think so long as I'm employed by the county, absolutely. And I think that's one of my strengths is that I really prioritize the meetings and not just attending virtually, but trying to fly over as much as I can to be there in person. I think that the networking opportunities and just the connections they make with not just our trustee members, but our investment managers and our plan managers. So I think, I think that that's something that I can definitely prioritize during, during my employment here at the county.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the next Governor's Message. Governor's Message 529. Submitting for consideration and confirmation for the Hawaii Labor Relations Board, gubernatorial nominee Stacy Moniz for a term to expire on June 30, 2029. Okay, up first, Mr. Moniz.
I remembered to bring my reading glasses. Good afternoon, Chair Akino, Vice Chair Morawaki, and the members of the committee. First, I want to say mahalo to the committee for the opportunity to speak. And this is sort of a unique situation since I'm the first nominee for a representative of labor on the HLRB board under the new law. And so I thought it's important to get a little background of myself and where I'm coming from. And I want to express my gratitude to Governor Green for my nomination to be able to sit before this committee. And I've been sitting as the interim representative of labor since August of 2023. And I've enjoyed working with the other board members, Board Chair Marcus Oshiro and Board Member Cessnita Moipono, along with the staff. It's been a very rewarding experience. And this nomination, I have to recognize that it was made possible with the support of all the six public sector unions, from Hawaii Government Employees Association, Hawaii Firefighters Association, the United Public Workers, the University of Hawaii Professional Assembly, the State of Hawaii Organization of Police Officers, and the Hawaii State Teachers Association. And I'm also humbled by the support and endorsement of other, of their support, along with the support of other labor organizations like AFSCIO, the ILWU. And regardless of that support from labor, which I appreciate tremendously, I understand and recognize my responsibility as a board member to render fair and impartial decisions based on what facts and evidence are introduced at each hearing. And to that end, I think important to note that the support that I have includes employers. Even though I'm up to be the representative of labor, I also have the support of two sitting mayors, Mayor Kawakami for the County of Kauai and Mayor Bisson for the County of Maui, as well as a former Kauai mayor and sitting council member Bernard Carvalho. And it was important to me to garner that type of support, to have the cross-section that even though I'm the representative of labor, that I also had the support of employers that recognize my abilities to be able to sit on the board. And also to that end, while the last six years, I've worked, over six years, worked for HGA, I also have a number of years working and advising various employers regarding labor matters and union matters. And I know that I want to make special mention of HGA because at HGA, when I left there for the majority of my term, I was the advocacy chief, which I did all the arbitrations and HLRB hearings. And I got that position because Randy Pereira gave me the opportunity to go and work for HGA. And I'm very, very grateful for that because he allowed me the opportunity to not only help the organization, but to represent thousands of public sector employees and to be able to help them. And it was probably the most rewarding time of my career. During that time, I succeeded on behalf of the organization in securing multimillion-dollar arbitration awards for thousands of HGA members for temporary hazard pay. And it was special for me to help these individuals get fair compensation for their sacrifices. And I also appeared numerous times before the HLRB as a practitioner, which I believe provides me a unique perspective while sitting on the board from having sat on the other side of the table. If for me, this personally, it would be an honor to continue to represent labor on the HLRB. And I may be a little late to public service, but it's a path that was very familiar to my family. My father was a police officer on Kauai for over 30 years. My oldest brother worked for the Kauai Fire Department and was a member of HFFA for many years. And my other brother worked for the County of Kauai. My sister was a public school teacher in California. And I would like to continue the family tradition of public service. My philosophy has always been to promote harmonious labor relations between employers and their exclusive representatives. And that should always be the goal despite any differences they may have. And looking forward, not backward, should be an ideal that is adhered to and carrying out that philosophy. I was born and raised on Kauai, attended Kalaeo School in Waimea High School. I then graduated from Chaminade University in the William S. Richardson School of Law. In my prior law practice, I was involved in primary litigation through the course of my career and have participated in hundreds of cases and arbitrations. Over 24 years ago, I faced legal and personal challenges that tested my character. I had my life transformed by unexpected events. It was difficult, but through the support of my family, my friends, and my faith, I was able to get past the challenges and rebuild my life. It wasn't easy, but through it all, I got a second chance and continued to maintain my integrity and self-respect. As my father would say, you would need to look at yourself in the mirror every morning with a clear conscience. I chose a route that may not be for everyone, but it was critical to me to preserve the confidences entrusted to me. Everyone deserves a second chance, and that is what I received and consider myself fortunate. And I clearly state that I've succeeded because of those challenges and not despite it. And that brings me to my last point, but clearly the most important to me. My family, my wife, Bonnie and our children, Raven and Kupono, are what is truly paramount in my life. My wife has always kept our family strong. We've been married for almost 30 wonderful years, even through all the trials and challenges that presented, that were presented in our life. She's here today with our daughter. And I think I can safely say with no disrespect to anyone that my wife is the strongest woman that I know. We have both navigated the challenges of life that have led to this day. And in fact, I believe my nomination is a recognition of them as much as me. So with your approval, and God willing, I intend to carry out my duties as the responsive representative of labor on the HLRB to the best of my abilities and to fulfill the mission of the board for timely, efficient, and fair decisions. And I humbly request your support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moniz. Okay, we will go ahead with the testifiers that we have received. Department of Labor Industrial Relations Director Bhutai. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Mayor of Kauai, Mayor Kawakami. Can support, United Public Workers.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Vice Chair.
Senators, good afternoon. So we've submitted written testimony. I stand strongly with our written testimony, but I just want to come up and give a few comments. First, I'm a Kalaeo 97 grab. So I, you know, that, that says everything right there. Public school is so important nowadays. And to have this nominee who's up for this position is so important for us in labor. It's been too long that this board has been structured with no one from labor having their voice on that seat. And be able to have someone that's related in our sister union means a lot to United Public Workers as we move forward. Something that, I'm a second-generation union man. And it was something my dad told me before he passed was, key thing for running a union is always taking care of your families and taking care of your members. And he always makes sure he, he said it in that order. And I, I saw that today when I walked up and Stacy's standing outside with his family. An individual that puts his family first is all the characteristics you need to know about a man. And that's why United Public Workers highly recommends this individual for this position. And close my statements.
Thank you very much.
Chair. Chair, sorry, I'm going to have to leave for EDU for Koran. Not, not you know her. But I just wanted to give my love and a little training. Hopefully, I make it back for the voting. Please wait for me, but I gotta go to another hearing. Shaka Rala.
All right. Thank you very much, Senator Favela. Up next, we have the Hawaii State Teachers Association.
Good afternoon, Chair and Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name's Andrea Eschleman. President Tuie is next door testifying, so I'm here in his place. I'm the Deputy Executive Director. HST stands on its written testimony, but I did want to add a few words of support for Mr. Moniz and his time that he served on the HLRB so far. We've had a couple of cases in recent months that have come up, and I just wanted to express, you know, we've been really impressed with his extensive knowledge of labor issues and his ability to really facilitate the issues before the board in a timely and appropriate manner. And it's just been wonderful to, to watch his work at the board, and we fully support him. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have the Chair of the HLRB, Marcus Oshiro.
Good afternoon, Chair Akino, Vice Chair Morawaki, Senator Saka, Gigan, Ihaara. I stand on my written testimony in support of the nominee. I can only echo the sentiments expressed already, but let me just share this with you. The right man, right person for the job is on the job. Believe me, I've worked with him over the last eight months, and there can be no other nominee so qualified, really able to serve the public. And I ask for your advice and consent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have the Hawaii Government Employee Association.
I think my colleagues have spoken use of my dying, so stand in trust.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have the University of Kauai Professional Assembly.
Christian Ferro with UHPA extends office support.
Thank you very much. Up next, we have Thomas Crowley. Can support, Les Ho, AFSCIO. Support Hawaii State Fed, AFL-CIO.
Once again, President St. Brandon for strong support.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have the Sailors Union of the Pacific. Support, okay, we have Shoppo. Present Kavako. Okay, also in support, we have the ILWU Local 142, Christian West. Support Hawaii Ports Maritime Council President Randy Swindell. Support Hawaii Nurses Association President Rosalie Agasiu. Support, Deborah Kagawa Yogi.
Hi, I stand in show support as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Carl Sakamoto, James Nicholson, Bronson Silva, Thomas Kaitano.
Sorry, Thomas Kaitano?
Kaitano, Kaitano. Kaitano, excuse me, sorry about that. Hey, you want to speak?
Oh, I'm in support of this thing. You have all these union executives. I am a low-level frontline person that serves all of us. If not for space, I would not be back in my current position. He brought forth a travesty that occurred. He brought back a travesty that occurred to me. And that's going to cost this state a lot of the narrows. He corrected the wrong. I have any questions you guys want to ask me, I will tell you. But he is, I've known Stacy a very long time, and he admitted to you here about his past. I know about his past firsthand, along with, I know firsthand what his capabilities are. And it will benefit all for you to select him and make his gubernatorial appointee for the people of Hawaii. Any questions?
No, we're, okay. Okay, you can stand by if there's any questions. Thank you, Thomas. Okay, up next, we have Gary Levitt. Can support Tony Rust, Josette Cavanna, Cavanna. Okay, Councilmember Carvalho of Kauai, all in support. Michael Broderick.
Chair Akino, Vice Chair Morawaki, committee members. The last 35 years, I've stood on my written testimony, but today I'm going to read it. Thank you. I stand in support in the strongest way possible of the gubernatorial nomination of Mr. Stacy Moniz. I worked extremely closely with him. I was the arbitrator in a case in which Mr. Moniz represented one of the parties. The arbitration hearing lasted 17 days, during which 157 witnesses were called, 225 exhibits were introduced, and the arbitration hearing transcript was 2,875 pages. I conservatively estimate that over the course of the 17-day arbitration, Mr. Moniz and I were together approximately 100 hours, either in person or through Zoom. When you spend that much time with someone, you get to know their substantive abilities and their personal attributes. Mr. Moniz has exceptional substantive abilities and exceptional personal attributes. When I practiced law, I dealt with many attorneys. When I was a state court judge, I presided over hundreds of trials and hundreds of settlement conferences in which hundreds and hundreds of attorneys appeared before me. Currently, as a mediator and arbitrator, I continue to work with numerous attorneys. In my 42-year career, Mr. Moniz is one of the top five lawyers I have ever worked with. He is extremely bright, and his analytical abilities are exceptional. His writing ability is superior, and his verbal skills are as honed as any attorney or non-attorney that I have ever worked with. His ability to quickly assess complex legal and factual material and to synthesize it is remarkable. In short, Mr. Moniz's legal abilities are outstanding. Finally, just a cursory review of his resume shows that he has a tremendous amount of labor law experience, exactly the type needed for this position. Just as important, perhaps more important, he has admirable personal attributes. No one will dispute that Mr. Moniz was a vigorous advocate. He certainly was in our case. And yet, despite his vigorous advocacy, based on my extensive experience with him, I can say with confidence that he is a person of high ethics, is honest, has unquestionable integrity and unimpeachable character. He also has a great sense of humor. As for Mr. Moniz's past, I wasn't aware of it during the arbitration. But because of how exceptional he was, I decided to Google this guy and find out who the heck is he? I wanted to know more about him. I was shocked by his past. And isn't that the point? I was shocked because the man I read about was not the man I spent 100 hours with. Assuming for purposes of discussion that Mr. Moniz was guilty as charged, clearly, he is a changed man. Moreover, Mr. Moniz was held accountable and punished for his wrongs. To punish him again after all these years and after he has changed would be fundamentally unfair. As I think about the HLRB and the critical issues that the board decides, I cannot think of anyone more qualified to serve as a member. The State of Hawaii will greatly benefit from his service. For the reasons I have shared, Mr. Moniz has my strongest and my unequivocal support. I respectfully urge the committee to support Mr. Moniz's nomination. Mahalo for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Okay, up next, we have Mayor Richard Bisson Jr. in his individual capacity. Can support John Kumeji. Also in support, Scott Collins, Christopher Ni'i.
Scott Collins, that's my, with his, with his testimony.
Thank you very much, in support. Christopher Ni'i. Nora Ibarra. Jay Musto. Sanford Chan. Michael J. Thank you very much. Michael J. Green. Joy Bullosan. Jesse Silva.
Well, I stand on my written testimony in support.
Okay, thank you very much. Sarah Shaw. Opposition. Members, we do have late testimony from Irish Barber. Testifying for IOTC 665, support. Okay, we have Germael Gervonte Anderson and John Neff, both in support. Any others wishing to testify? Seeing none?
I just want to stand in body with Hawaii Fire Fighters Association. We did not submit written testimony, but everybody here, I also want to stand. Fire fighters are standing in support.
Thank you very much. Okay, any others wishing to testify? Seeing none, members, questions? Senator Favela.
I told Senator Kudani she had to hurry up. So I'm gonna study on the teacher's salary, so don't get excited. You know, and just to touch on what you had said at the ending of your testimony, we know we're we know we have an opposition. And you touched briefly on it, but I just wanted to, the question I wanted to ask you is that you talked about continuing your service, the legacy of your family. When we, I guess the question would be, you know, first of all, you're young, and you're saying you're starting your career, but I'm 56, and I just started my career. Because my community gave me a second chance. So I know you believe in your heart, so in mine, are second chances, but can you just share a little bit of, just not in depth of what happened, but just with your family and how your family has supported you in your trials and your relationship, because we all go through that. Right now, we're going through a lot of insecurity where we are taking place here at this square building. And I like people to understand the position that you're in. Don't get me wrong, 110% happy that we're finally getting somebody like you on the board, and a lot of people that normally knows that. But I just want to share just a little bit of your anchor, your wife, your family, and the continuous of your service. So people in the TV land can understand the importance of what you're doing, but not only when you're doing it, to have support from your family.
Thank you, Senator. It is the foundation of my life and what I do. And when I faced those trials, there was no way I could get through it without the support of my wife, my family in general. When everything happened, my children were five and three years old. It was very traumatic for everybody. And the trauma to me was not so much for myself personally, but it was leaving my family. And my wife held the family together. And, you know, we're talking a young family, not teenagers, early twenties, a young family. And we stayed strong throughout it. We believed in ourselves, and like I think I mentioned, that throughout this, and there was negative publicity, but my self-respect and my integrity never wavered because I know I had that support. And throughout, it's been that way. And since I've been back, which is over 24 years, it wasn't all roses. It was trying times in trying to rebuild, you know, my life and rebuild what I had created. Not many people can build up a career and have an established career, and I think I can say a successful career, have that all taken away completely, and then try to rebuild it all from the bottom up. And it's not all due to me, because like I said, I had a lot of help on the way. You know, Michael Green was the first one to hire me, which was very important to me. He gave me an opportunity and his confidence in me. And then the opportunity that Randy Pereira gave. You know, it's with help like that that you can rebuild. And if anything, you know, regardless of what the vote is, and, you know, I say this with all sincerity, regardless of what the vote is, you know, I want this to stand for something that other people who have faced obstacles and faced challenges, you don't have to give up. You got to pick yourself up, right? And keep going and look forward, and not give up. You know, because no matter how dark it gets or how bad the situation appears, right? There's always hope. And you got to rely on your family, you got to rely on your faith, and you got to just keep pushing forward. And there was a lot of times where, yeah, I considered giving up. But I couldn't. Not only for myself, but more importantly, for my family, I couldn't. And so I kept working at it and trying everything I possibly could. And part of my career, to answer your question, is that I had to take a job working in Guam and Saipan just to keep paying the bills and keep things going. And at first, I would go, and it would be like a week, then it became two weeks, then three weeks, four weeks. And then all of a sudden, I was being over there for like two months at a time. And so I left that job because I didn't want to be away from my family for that long. And so it was a very good job. I enjoyed it. But that constant requirement of removing me from my family, I just couldn't do it anymore. And that's, right after that is when I started working for HGA. So without my family, I wouldn't be sitting here.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Thank you, appreciate it.
Senator Hara.
I wanted to just walk through at least my process for someone in your situation. So, and we, thank you for meeting with me for such a long time.
Sure, thank you.
So you acknowledge the wrongs that you did to society or what's on the record?
I can't dispute the record, Senator. It's there, and it's something that I've never shied away from. I've never hid from it. I think in my meetings, you know, as I have stated, I will answer, you know, whatever questions. And I really mean it when I say that I succeeded because of it, not despite it. Because because of that episode is part of what drove me to succeed.
So have you forgiven yourself for having done what you did?
Forgive myself all the time for not only what happened, but for my family. Because my family had to live through that.
My interest is in telling stories that can support others who have fallen off the path and want to really, and who really care. I mean, one thing I've got from you throughout your life, you've been an incredibly caring person, no matter what the circumstances. And I think, in a way, for me, you're an example of someone who can help others to really do good for our community.
I appreciate that.
I, there was a university president that had had some legal problems and was admitted. And I was going to oppose that person. And she had agreed to, you know, tell the story and help others and so forth. And I met, you know, intensively, hours and hours. And she had agreed to do that. And then after the vote, she didn't recall the conversation. And so I would ordinarily be concerned, and I will be concerned, and I'm not really concerned, actually, in your case, but I will be watching, I'll stay in touch with you and so forth. But if there is, if there is a way that you can have your story be a source of inspiration for others, that would really be good. That would be my preference. And I think you're in a position to do that. You have the character and the support and the history to do that.
I appreciate that, Senator. And I would love to be that type of inspiration. And I look forward to staying in contact with you. I welcome that.
Thank you.
Vice Chair.
We've had a conversation as well. And what I respected about what your attitude about how you resolve problems. And I'm just wondering, with all your past experience, how would you bring that forward in terms of not just being an advocate for labor, but solving problems for people who come before the board?
Well, Senator, it's funny. I was telling some people this story. Having been an advocate for so long, the first hearing that I sat on for the HLRB, and one of the attorneys asked the question, and I was about ready to object. And I had to catch myself sort of mid-sentence to say I'm, and tell myself I'm no longer an advocate, but I'm here to listen and try to solve problems. In my younger days, I wouldn't talk. It was simply, let's go straight to the fight. Over the years, you know, I've learned that that doesn't serve anybody's best interest. I strongly urge, and I practice this, I tell employers and unions alike, pick up the phone. Go meet each other, go meet for coffee, meet for lunch, talk. You might have five issues that you look at and you say you disagree with. But by talking and meeting and having an open line of communication, you might be able to resolve three of them. You might have common ground on three of them. And so at best, you could narrow it down, or you could agree on all five. But at least you have the opportunity to try and narrow down the disagreements. I did cases at HGA and cases at HLRB where people walk in and I ask, have you folks talked to each other or discussed this? Oh, no. And I'm like, well, then, why are you here? You know, go outside and go and talk and see what happens. So I understand that the employers have their issues, and they have to carry out their mandate and their mission. At the same time, that has to be balanced with the labor organizations, the exclusive representatives, as to what their responsibilities are. And then hopefully, by that very definition, you're going to reach a happy medium, right, of compromise. And I learned a long time ago in doing civil litigation that any kind of settlement or resolution is where all the parties walk away unhappy. Because one side is going to say, we paid too much, and the other side is going to say, we didn't get enough. And to me, that's the perfect settlement. And what I find is just that sort of lack of communication in this day and age, which is ironic since we have so many forms and methods of communicating now. Before, because, you know, when I try to explain to my kids that I would call my father from college "collect", you know, they have no idea what that is. But yet, because technology has advanced so far, but yet it seems like that communication gets less and less between the parties. And that's something that, you know, I hope I can lend some support to curing. But that communication, and if the communication doesn't work, then that's why you have HLRB. Then you bring the cases that you just cannot resolve. But we shouldn't be the first line. That attempt should be made to try and resolve things. And only when you cannot resolve it, then it end up before the board.
Do you see that as a process? With HLRB, the case is already, the opposition is there, they come before you. Or can you say, go outside, go talk story first before you come back in? Or what is that process? Or can you do that?
Sure. It's interesting, because Board Chair Oshiro and I have been discussing the opportunities of actually going out to employers and unions and having conferences and having seminars to encourage, you know, this type of communication. Almost, if you will, a joint labor management conference but held by the HLRB. To go to the counties, to go to the different state departments and give them at least our two cents of what we see as hopefully speeding along the process or keeping the path smooth. Because when it's not smooth, when there are all the bumps in the road, right? It's not only the employees that suffer or management suffers, it's all the people of Hawaii suffer. Because it's the public sector unions that are workers who are providing all of these services. And so if you cannot reach a resolution or a meeting of the minds, everybody suffers. And so it's in everybody's best interest, you know, to sit down and to try and work it out. And I always believe in that. Harmonious labor relations, as it says in Chapter 89, should always be the goal.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Okay, members, any other questions? I have a quick question. There's one specific, I think there's only one testimony in opposition. You know, specifically, this person had mentioned that you may not qualify because of the conviction and because the fact that you're not a licensed attorney. How would you respond to that one person?
First, regarding the license. First of all, my predecessor on the Labor Board was not a licensed attorney, wasn't an attorney at all. To practice before the board, you don't need to be a licensed attorney. That's not a requirement. Just like it is in representing unions in arbitrations, you don't need to be a licensed attorney. The conviction, and I don't mean to be facetious about it, but, you know, last time I checked, it wasn't a death sentence. It wasn't something that prohibits me from ever earning a living or advancing my career or advancing my life and my families. And I think I know the person that you're talking about, because you mentioned the name. And I just want to state for the record that that person is a former adversary in a case before the HLRB, where they filed a claim against HGA. And I defended HGA in that case to the best of my abilities. They lost the case. And to give you the irony of them taking that position, that woman was represented by her husband, who's not an attorney. So to turn around and criticize me for not having a license, yet she proceeded in a case before the board with a non-attorney representing her, is a little hypocritical as far as I'm concerned. I've been eligible to get my law license back or to apply for it since 2008. And I've just chosen not to. It's my own personal choice that I just don't want to get it back. I enjoy what I'm doing. I don't need it to do what I'm doing. And so I'm perfectly happy without it. So that negativity about that, I think, needs to be kept in context.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Moniz.
Thank you.
Okay, up next, Governor's Message 531. Submitted for consideration and confirmation to the Hawaii Workforce Development Council nominee, Tuyana Scanlon, for a term to expire June 30, 2027.
Hello, I'm Kovac, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Tuyana Scanlon, President of IATSE Local 665, International Trustee. I have been a union member since 2007. I have been a union leader since 2013 in some capacity or another. I will be honest, when I first learned of the Workforce Development Council, I had no idea what it was that they did, aside from what was in their title. And I volunteered for the position during an AFL-CIO meeting. I was a grip for many years on film and TV. I was also a rigor in rock and roll and trade show and convention world. It is not uncommon that we dive into the unknown and find solutions where there seem to be none. Very quickly, I would learn of the passion and the drive that many of the council members possess and displayed. I'm eager to create opportunities for the working families of Hawaii. I think that there's been a conversation about labor shortage. I don't think there's a shortage of labor, but a shortage of opportunities for them to succeed. I look forward to being able to coordinate with local boards and with fellow council members. I come before you seeking confirmation to the Workforce Development Council, and I will be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, up first, we have Georgia Skinner.
Hi, Georgia Skinner, Creative Industries Division, and strong support. I'm here with our workforce development team, who work closely with Mr. Scanlon, and we wholeheartedly support this GM 531, and thank you so much for considering.
Okay, thank you very much. Walea Konstantinou. Okay, support, Lesi Lopez, Center for Labor Education and Research. Okay, and support, United Public Workers. Thank you very much. Council of Hawaii Entertainment Unions.
Hello, I'm Arisha Palma Elmore. You all know me from coming here with SAG-AFTRA. And so, the council is just, oh, that's me.
Don't mind, there's a little.
I know, right? Right? The councils, the musicians and other unions have gotten together, and we wanted to come together as a force also with the entertainment unions to say how much we support this. So we're standing on our testimony. But I also wanted to say a couple of things that with Tuiy Scanlon, you're not going to find a more astute observer of labor trends and workforce development trends and also what the needs are. And then, secondly, you're not going to find anyone who is a more generous public servant, generous with his time and energy, and would be a real benefit to this council. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Christian Fern, UPA. Okay, thank you very much. HEA.
On both behalf of HGA and the Hoi State Department, so strong support.
Okay, thank you very much. Pride at Work Hawaii. Okay, and support, T. George Paris, Ironworker Stabilization Fund. Also in support, Awalani Freitas, Hawaii County Film Commissioner. Okay, support, Damian Kim, IBW 1186. Okay, support, Sailors Union of the Pacific. Hawaii Ports Maritime Council, AFL-CIO. Randy Swindell. Both in support, Hawaii Nurses Association, Rosalie Augustu, President. Support Michael Kooloe Jr., on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Michael Kooloe Jr. On behalf of the Stonewall Caucus, the Democratic Party of Hawaii. We stand in strong support of Tuiy's nomination. We can't, we could not ask for a better ally and advocate in Tui. He will be a great resource, and we are, all of Hawaii should be privileged to actually have and willing to put so much time and serve in this capacity, given everything he already does. But I know he would not put his name forward if he knew he couldn't do it. And he is just an exemplary leader, an exemplary friend. And so, we encourage you to pass his nomination. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Laura Totero, Ronson Silva. Ki'ahi Kui'kahi. Arthur Wilson, Ikaika Sims, Ron Evans, Shane White. All in support, Brandon Tapati. Bling Chao. William Self, Patrick Aloy, Travis Hoover, Patrick Lum, Terry Uten, Raymar Weilard II, Richard Spellman. Okay, all in support, Kevin Kersting. Okay, and support, Brian Gilhuli, Jim Murphy, Wendell Capo Leslie, Thomas Penny, Tracy Otani, Kapala Napikoff. Okay, all in support, Sunny Ortiz, Robert Carson, Irish Barber. Okay, all in support, members. We also have late testimony from Lisa Lee Mitchell. Jessica Assing. We have Penet Mislucha, Workforce Development Council Executive Director, on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair Akino, Vice Chair Sharon Morawaki, and members of the Senate Committee on Labor and Technology. My name is Penet Mislucha, Executive Director of the Workforce Development Council. We strongly and enthusiastically support GM 531 with Tuiy Scanlon as council member of the Workforce Development Council. Mr. Scanlon has been a part of WDC for the last nine months, and he's really been a joy to work with. He is the Chair of our Workforce Youth Sector Committee, and he always does his homework. I can attest to his unwavering commitment to lift our workforce, and he's always supportive of initiatives that can foster economic growth in our community. He has a deep understanding of the challenges of the workforce, probably born out of the fact that he lived it through his experiences. He started from the bottom and worked his way up to become president of his union. So, at WDC, we're always inspired by his example, his work ethic, and his leadership skills. And we really see him as someone who can make a significant contribution to our mission. So, we respectfully ask this committee to support his nomination. Mahalo, Chair.
Thank you very much. We also have a late testimony from Ken Louis, Chair of the WDC.
Aloha, Chair Akino, Vice Chair Morawaki, members of the committee. My name is Ken Louis, currently Chair of the Workforce Development Council. And I sent, I submitted testimony, and some strong support of Mr. Scanlon. It's been a pleasure to work with. We appreciate his leadership, participation, and input to the council, and look forward for his participation in the years to come. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Any others wishing to testify? Yeah, please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Chair Akino, Vice Chair Morawaki, Senators. My name is Henry Fordham. I am a member of IATSE Local 665. I have worked alongside Mr. Scanlon in the field, in the office, and I could not have a better man in this position. And I hope you support and forward his nomination.
Thank you very much. Any others wishing to testify? Okay, Singnan, members, questions? Okay, Vice Chair.
Thank you for your willingness to serve. Can you just tell us, you've been on the WDC for eight months, nine months now? What do you see? And you're also the Chair of the Youth Committee, but also in terms of creative industries, you've got a lot of support there. But what can you see as what you could contribute and what can be done in the creative industries?
Copy that, thank you. Thank you for the question. I think as far as the council goes, as Youth Sector's Committee Chair, I think the low-hanging fruit is supporting young people that are exiting correctional facilities, that have been rehabilitated and needed a second shot at life. I think the low-hanging fruit there is connecting them with the American job centers that I think are underutilized. I think there are many different skill sets that can be developed within the youth that are exiting correctional facilities. And if they have paid their debt to society, then they deserve a shot at success as an adult. As far as creative industries, excuse me. Oftentimes with our union, when we are here at the Square Building, the talk is all about film and television, because we are advocating for initiatives and other things pertinent to that industry, that sector of the industry. But I truly feel that creative industries is about effectively supporting people in telling their story. And that also spreads out to live events. Trade shows and conventions are directly related to business tourism. Those are the types of events that bring in a higher-spending clientele that are, that don't contribute to traffic because they're locked in their trade show or convention space. They inevitably bookend their trip with leisure time on the front end or back end or both. And then, that brings significant dollars, I think, to the state that I think has been underutilized as well. As far as creative industries goes, I feel like there are so many different facets of the workforce that are encompassed in the skill sets that are represented in the crafts that Local 665 is in our jurisdiction and in the IATSE, that far and away, if we reverse-engineer it from we are working full-time on set, we have gone through training either in higher education or in niche training modules for industry-specific skill sets. Prior to that, it is working in the schools for events that are easily recognizable, like sporting events, like assemblies, school plays, May Days, fundraisers. Before that, it is truly encouraging children to learn where they fit in in the arts space, whether it is playing with Play-Doh or playing with Legos, that there is a place for everyone. Not everyone will sit center stage, not everyone is there to be behind a microphone. But there is so much opportunity to involve the youth of Hawaii in these thriving wage jobs so that they don't have to leave to find their fortune elsewhere on the continent.
So, how do you see the connection between what the education part of it is and the jobs and the careers that, and opportunities in terms of developing the production side?
Copy that, thank you. I think there is a tendency to view a career pathway as taking someone who is not working and then putting them to work. And I believe that is more of a doorway instead of a pathway. To truly create a pathway to a career, the steps begin at early education for awareness, and doing outreach at elementary schools and middle schools, encouraging them to be involved with school activities in their, if they have a film and TV program, sure. But every school has a theater of some kind, even if it's just inside of the cafeteria and the lunchroom stage. There are still opportunities for them to participate in assemblies, which are basically boiled-down conventions. Still an opportunity to set up chairs and audiovisual and projection and microphone. And then, from there, moving on into higher-stakes events. So I think the development truly starts in investing in early education so that the steps of the journey are clearly laid out. And it's our responsibility as the adults in the room to make sure that we clear the road for them, that we plant seeds for trees whose shade we may not see or fruit we may not taste. But it is an important thing, that I think, an effort that we need to make to make our society grow great.
Thank you, Chair.
Members, any other questions? Senator Phil?
As long as we plant the trees and nobody go get hit by a car.
Yes.
All right. My understanding was, were you appointed to this position?
Yes.
I get so much questions, but, you know, I always enjoy talking to you. So, I don't like hold up the time because you always come to the office and talk. But I think you just elaborate a little bit more with the pathways of the school, because you shared a lot with me and your vision and working with this group on how we're going to get the Workforce Development Council together and understanding. Can you just elaborate a little bit on how great the movie industry in Hoi? A lot of people didn't, don't know that in Tui, the auto fiasco's been happening over here in the Square Building. Can you just elaborate how important it is to groom our young children now so there will be a future of this industry?
Yes, copy that. I will also tie that into the Workforce Development Council and that like, the lessons that we've learned in overcoming obstacles and the trials and tribulations of putting on a show is a microcosm, I think, of some of the challenges that we face as a state in that we look for ways to ensure that working families can afford to stay here, that they don't have to leave. Film and TV industry is one of those industries, live events as well, that can be lucrative, thriving wage jobs to ensure that working families have an opportunity to stay. As far as the industry itself, it brings in a significant amount of economic activity, economic impact, household wages. I believe the 2021 DBED study was for $50 million that the state put out in the tax incentive. Around $45.5 million of state revenues were generated. So for around $5.5 million of state revenues invested in this program, $728 million of economic activity, $168 million of household wages were generated. And I would take that kind of multiplier any day of the week. It is not only that, not only is it lucrative, it is also rewarding. There, I cannot tell you, I don't think we have enough time this week to discuss all of the many things that I've learned from the people around me and the investment that they've made in me and my career development in helping me to be not only a better worker, but a better person. My father-in-law said something that I will carry with me for the rest of my life, and he says that trouble or difficulty does not build character. It reveals it. You can truly see who someone is when the stuff hits the fan. And that when we have been in the field for upwards of 90 hours, working six days a week in the jungle somewhere, to still see generosity and cooperation and collaboration, the way that folks bend together to support each other to make sure they don't fall by the wayside, but ensure that they get their due and they are supported and safe and get to go home in the same shape or better than they showed up in, I think has been an inspiration for me this, for the many years that I've been in this industry and prior to it, when I worked elsewhere, before being lucky enough to be in the union. I think that this industry could be a significant economic driver, that it is untapped resources that has yet to be fully utilized. But in doing so, in the awareness that that exists for my industry, I know that those opportunities also exist for the other industries that are represented at the Workforce Development Council, and that we can share of the lessons that we've learned and the obstacles that we've had to overcome together.
The only reason why I bring it up, and, you know, a lot of people don't know what you guys actually do, not only with the workforce development, but in the field of movie industry. Reason why I want to bring this up, and you don't have to answer this question because I really know the answer. Things right now with this marijuana bill, they're saying that this is going to be the new economic force. If we put enough effort into the movie and the industry and workforce development, this industry that we're talking about now with you and the rest of the industries as a part of it, it's going to bring you more money than any marijuana tree that they're going to bring to the community. And that's what I want people to understand. They're saying they're supporting it because it's going to bring money. This is why we're supposed to be supporting workforce development in the industries that has been bringing money to the state, but nobody tapped into it. And this is something that I think we can move forward in really bringing money to our state. Thank you, Chair.
I can't comment on the other bill, but I will say that, just briefly, that there are, there was an experiment done, I believe it was in New Mexico, for when they were advocating for the film tax incentive, and their per diem money was given to everyone in $2 bills. Obviously, this is in the before times and a long, long ago when paper money was actually given out to people for per diem and not in the check. And a stamp put on it that these dollars came from the film industry. And to watch it circulate in the community, that the amount of money that comes through with productions not only go into wages, but go to local businesses and go to buying lumber and steel pipes and chains and fabric and clothing and food. And the, it's, the reach, I think the ripple effect has not been an item that we have truly focused on yet, but it could be something, it could be something great for the state, I believe.
Thank you, thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Senator Yarrell.
I appreciate the effort to recruit our young kid generation to the film industry. There's been recent stories, and there's a history of, especially with some of the unions connected to the film industry, with some criminal stories. And I don't know if we can somehow address that somehow so that we don't have that or we don't have the stories, or I mean, it'll spook the kids. And, you know, so is there a way to include that as a way to address the situation?
Yeah, and I think, thank you for the question. I think that that kind of element exists in just about everywhere. Unfortunately, there is a dark side. For wherever there is light, there must also be shadow. I think that if there is anywhere that could empathize with, you know, finding out that colleagues or people that you know in the industry have committed heinous acts or have committed crimes, completely unawares, and knowing the amount of conscious effort that it would take to rebuild on public trust and faith, knowing that the vast majority of the people in the industry are not like that and have not done things of that nature. It would be, I believe, the folks that could empathize most with that would be in this building. That there were also people here who had committed some building, that, that there were also people here who had committed some things and done some things that do not reflect on the wider group of legislators who are here to do the good work that is public service. But I would say the way that we, we combat that is by starting with early outreach and, you know, making sure the kids have these thriving wage jobs so that they are not in a place of desperation. And I think that's the key, that when folks don't have to worry about where they're gonna find their food, suddenly a lot of that energy can be allocated elsewhere to thriving and supporting their community in the positive ways that they can through this industry.
I have just one question. So you're President of IATSC?
Yes, sir.
You recently became International Trustee.
Yes, sir.
You've been on as an interim member of WDC for the last eight, nine months.
Yes, sir.
You've taken on a leadership position within the WDC, heading a certain committee. Among the many other things that you do, I guess the question would be, you know, do you have the commitment to, to serve during this term?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, let's save the best for last. Yeah? Governor's Message 658, submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Hawaii Retirement Savings Board nominee Brian Taniguchi for a term to expire June 30th, 2028.
I'm such a guy, I stand on my strong support.
Welcome back.
Hello, everybody. This is Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the committee. Brian Taniguchi, one of your former colleagues, here to ask for your support for my nomination to the Hawaii Retirement Savings Board. I have, last four years in office, worked very hard to try to get a bill passed. We were not quite successful, so we hope that legislature this year will try to pass an opt-out bill, which would help us. I've served on the board for the last, almost, not quite a year, probably nine months. And I was approached to serve another term. We actually haven't gotten started because of the restrictions on opt-out type of things. So hopefully we'll get the executive director soon and we'll try to be able to move forward with what I think is a very, very good program, it's gonna help a lot of people and help the state eventually because of having people with money for retirement pension and their own pension will be, help us a lot and help them in the future as opposed to having people with no retirement monies. So anyway, that's, ask for your support. Open to any questions.
Thank you very much.
I think Randy Perera was gonna submit late testimony, right?
All time.
All time, yeah, well, it's WR, but you're still gonna do it.
Okay, we'll call you back up if you have any questions. Okay, first we have Department of Labor.
Good afternoon, Chair, Kino, Vice Chair, Mayor Waki and members. If I may ask for your indulgence, Chair, and also testify on behalf of the board as well. I serve as co-chair. Strongly support, we're very fortunate that Mr. Taniguchi has agreed to serve a full term. He served an initial one-year term because this is a brand-new board and we strongly urge your support for his nomination. Thank you.
For the record, can we find out what this gentleman is?
Oh, sorry. Bill Kuntzman, Deputy Director, Department of Labor and Industrial. Thanks. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we have HGE.
We have both HGE and the FCA, we're strong support.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, United Public Workers, okay, in support. Okay, we have ARP Hawaii, Audrey Suganakagawa.
Hi, good afternoon, Chair, members of the committee. I'm Audrey Suganakagawa, Advocacy Director for ARP. We stand our testimony in strong support of Mr. Taniguchi's reconfirmation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Sailors Union of the Pacific, okay, in support, Randy Swindell, okay, also in support, Hawaii Nurses Association, okay, in support, Craig Kugisaki, Paulo Shiro, Bronson Silva, all in support, Irish Barber, Hawaii IATSC, okay, also in support. Any others wish you to testify? Seeing none, members, questions? Oh, Vice Chair.
Mr. Taniguchi, Senator.
I just, I just want you to come walking up, you know.
Thank you for your service and thank you for deciding to come back again for another term. Tell us why you're re-upping.
Re-upping, oh, well, you know, I, I just felt we hadn't really got the ball rolling. I wanted, that's why I took the one-year term, actually. I thought we'd kinda get things going, but we, yeah, so we still face, hopefully, some legislative changes to the law and can get moving after that. So I'd like to see, at least get that part of it going.
What do you see are the biggest challenges you've served now for, well, almost a term, I mean, almost a year? What are the challenges that you see that need to be addressed in the coming?
Well, I, I think the biggest challenge, well, we got two probably. One is the changing of the law to make it opt-out as opposed to the current law, which is opt-in. If, we kinda already have an opt-in, you know, thing going in the state, but the opt-out stuff would mean that employers would have, automatically have the program available to all their workers. The workers could then opt out of the program as opposed to having them opt into a program. And it would be cost-effective. I think the, it would be a payroll-type adjustment for the employer, which wouldn't be, we don't think it's gonna be that big of a cost at all. And it provide the, their workers with a retirement plan. They could put in as much as they want and hopefully build up. There are probably seven or eight states that already have the program and Oregon kinda started it and they already have hundreds of millions of dollars that we, in their, well, in the eight states at least, invested. This way the state would invest that money, you know, in a safe way and be, it'd also be portable for people to take around, but you have to do that opt-out. The opt-out also allows us to maybe link up with another state like Oregon or Colorado and have our, you know, shared resources and our, our base of employees that we've identified is relatively small, it's about 100, I think about 120,000, I think was the last, somewhere around there. So it's relatively small. So linking up with a state, with another state might be an option for us, but we don't have that now because the other states won't join with us because we have an opt-in. The other challenge I think we have outside of the opt-out stuff is trying to get an executive director. We've had, we thought we had a pretty good one, but I think for whatever reason he turned us down and so we do have to do a search and the executive director will be very important. Hopefully we can get somebody. It's a relatively limited group of people that would probably qualify, but hopefully we can get somebody.
You had, I know that the, the compensation was a problem and have you folks been able to address that?
We have, we are aware of the problem. We haven't quite been able to address it as yet.
Because the qualifications are pretty high.
The qualifications are very high.
The compensation has to match the qualifications requirement.
I think we're sort of in compliance with our own state requirements for that position. So we do have, we would probably have to get some sort of exemption or something, but we haven't, actually, the, the one that we had, we thought we would be able to hire for executive director, he was getting, I think, a little less than the salary that we had proposed. It wasn't, yeah, you know, it wasn't that far off, but he would have, he was a kinda, I guess, a deputy type guy and he would have been the, our executive director, so, but, so we're kinda close, but we'll, we'll have to see.
Senator Favela.
Thank you very much. Well, first of all, mahalo, you know, not only the willingness to serve another term, it is the willingness to work with me with this minimum wage bill and no tip penalties. I learned a lot from you, knowing how important it is to take care of our minimum wage workers and how important the tip penalties is, yeah? So that's one thing I wanna thank you for. And in this, you know, you're looking a lot more younger every time I see you in this building, so I think that office was making you look old. What office is that now? Oh, sorry.
Grace coming in.
But thank you, appreciate you.
Thank you, Senator. Appreciate it.
I saw your high political skill to get this bill passed, so.
What was that?
I saw your high political skills employed to get this bill passed. It was not a walk in the park.
It was tough.
So I wanna thank you for doing that. Who is the chair, the, the board or committee?
Yeah, I think Mr. Kuntzman and, I'm sorry, Jade.
Oh, Jade is the chair.
And Louis Salavario, co-chairs.
What if the bill to allow the, acquire the opt-out, what if that fails? What, how do you see it going forward? Not hopefully, you know, but just.
Well, it'd make it almost impossible for us to proceed, I think, you know, because currently people can opt into a program, but it's not, it'd be, the only thing would be run by the state, I guess, you know. There also in the last bill, one of the things was that there was a $25 million appropriation to help people opt-in, you know, as an incentive. So I'm not sure what's gonna happen. I think currently there's, talk about maybe lapsing that money, you know. I'm hoping that maybe some of that money, maybe a half a million or a million, is set back instead of the whole 25 million being lapsed so that, you know, that, that the program can provide some, needs money to, to get started, so.
So the requirement, an opt-out system would not have to use the 25 million?
An opt-out system would not have to use the?
That large amount.
That large amount, yeah. The, the 25 million was to encourage, incentivize people to opt-in.
And you believe that a half million is roughly enough to, to the 25?
I'm probably going beyond what I should say, but yeah, I think we probably need to discuss that with the board. But I'm hoping that a portion of it at least will stay with the, with the board and not the whole.
I was thinking your high political skill could be implied.
My high political skill, yeah, right?
This is even trickier, I think, in a way. Okay, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Members, any other questions? Okay, we're gonna recess briefly for decision-makings. Thank you. Okay, reconvening our 3:00 PM agenda, Governor's Messages for Decision-Making. Okay, first we have Governor's Message 528, submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Board of Trustees of the Deferred Compensation Plan. Okay, nominee is Blanche Reiko Matsuyama for a term to expire on June 30th, 2027. Members, the recommendation is to advise and consent. Questions or concerns, members? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
So Chair Kino.
Aye.
Vice Chair, aye. Senator Ihara.
Aye.
Senator Lee.
Aye.
Senator Favela.
Aye.
So we have advise and consent, recommendations to advise and consent.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving, moving on to Governor's Message 529, submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Hawaii Labor Relations Board nominee is Stacy Moniz for a term to expire June 30th, 2029. Members, before we provide the recommendation, I'd like to say that I was very impressed in the numerous meetings that we did have, Mr. Moniz. Your experience as an attorney, consultant, arbitrator, among many other things, advocacy chief for HGE, you know, I think you are very much forthright, open, honest, and I think what you have shared today is deserving. Okay, so having said that, we go, the recommendation is to advise and consent, Governor's Message 529. Questions or concerns, members?
Aye.
Yes, Senator Ihara.
As you may know, I voted, I was the only senator to vote no against on the bill that allowed for this, the labor unions to nominate one person. The governor allowed it to be lost, so we're not, my concern was we're taking away the power of the governor that's given to the governor by the Constitution, but if this governor accepts it, then it's okay with me. The concern may arise for a future governor who may say that, may assert that, that governor's Constitution right to appoint, but under this governor, I, I think it's, there's an agreement and so I'm okay with this. And for the nominee, I'm, I'm okay and I wish you well in your, the rest of your career.
Okay, thank you very much, Senator Ihara. Any other comments, members, seeing none? Vice Chair.
Okay, for the recommendations, advise and consent, all members present, anyone voting no, anyone with reservation, recommendation adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, members. Governor's Message 531, submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Hawaii Workforce Development Council nominee Tuiana Scanlon for a term to expire June 30th, 2027. Members, the recommendation is to advise and consent. Questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
All members present, anyone voting no, with reservation, recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Governor's Message 658, submitting for consideration and confirmation to the Hawaii Retirement Savings Board. Okay, nominee is Brian Taniguchi for a term to expire June 30th, 2028. Members, the recommendation is to advise and consent. Questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Yeah, Chair. I'll be voting, I'll be voting in a strong yes.
Okay, thank you very much for your, for that. Okay, members, any other comments? Is seeing none, Vice Chair.
Recommendation is to advise and consent, all members present, anyone voting no, reservation, strong yes. Recommendation adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. 3:00 PM agenda is adjourned. Thank you.